Good evening. It is March 10th of 2020 and it is 6:30 PM. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We are missing one person. Councilmember Peterson was not feeling well, and like all of us should be doing this time of year when you're not feeling well, he went home. So we do have a quorum, and it is 6:30, and I am calling this meeting to order. This evening, we are blessed to have two wonderful kids with us. Kinsley Bond. Kinsley, if you could come stand right up here by the podium and turn around, and I think the press is walking in, so this may all work out well. Kinsley is in 6th grade at Cedar Creek Intermediate School. She is a part of the Peer Assistant Leadership Program called PALS, and she helps the teachers get things done in their classroom. Her favorite subject is math, and she thinks when she's older, she would like to help with shipwrecks and reclaiming things from shipwrecks. So that is a very cool career to think about. And she's also a part of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. With her tonight is Joel Lucio. Come on up, Joel. Joel is in 5th grade, and his favorite subject is math. And no, council, I wasn't able to talk either one of them into being engineers, but I still have time. They're young enough, I still have time. Joel is in choir, and he likes to play soccer. And like I said, his favorite subject is math, and Joel is also in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes Organization. So this, these two young people are going to lead us in our pledges if everyone would please rise.
(inaudible)
I don't see Chaplain Oliver. So, oh, there you are. Sorry. Okay, Chaplain Oliver, if you'll come forward, if everyone will please remain standing, he will give us our invocation tonight.
Let's pray. Holy Father, we thank you for the opportunity to help govern and direct the affairs of the city. Pray for the city board as well as those who've come here to weigh in, give their opinions. There would be a spirit of wisdom, of community, of commitment to service and to welfare of each other. Thank you for these young people who already represent those values, who represent the future of this community, and I pray they would continue to grow strong and true. We ask your blessing on these proceedings, and ask for wisdom and guidance in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. You may all be seated. Thank you very much, Chaplain. That was a wonderful prayer. All right, we are moving on to Item 4A, which is the mayor's report, and I have a couple of things before we get going on the report. One item is, it's time Texas finished up on Friday, and we did not place in the top three, but we gave it a good try, and that's what counts. We should congratulate David Juarez, who had posted 291 events, more than any other employee of the City of Bastrop. So let's give David a round of applause.[220.12][220.12](applause) Amy Jordan's going to be mad because I think they were in a competition. Amy posted 168 items, so she was, she was right up there. And Heather Ambrose was also over 100. So was I, but it would be rude to say my number, so I'm not going to. But congratulations to Heather. I appreciate the community pulling together on that. I do want to say just a quick word about the COVID-19. I am on daily calls with the DSHS, and there's all kinds of information out there. I just want to say two things. It's flu season. It's flu season this time of year, every year. Over 80,000 people died from the flu last year, and we didn't shut down every event. So we want to be practical and use wisdom, but we also don't want to overreact. As your emergency management, we are taking all the necessary precautions. We're prepared to take care of things. But I just want to confirm, as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, although there are 16 cases in Texas, none of them are from community spread. They can all be related to travel. So doing things like Councilmember Peterson did, if you are running fever, if you don't feel well, it's a great time to stay home. Aren't we lucky and blessed to live in an age where people can work remotely? So there's a way to get your job done, take care of your loved ones, and they, I know that Gregg County is being mentioned for the very first time, but the three in Collin County and the one in Gregg County are all travel-related. There are no confirmed community spread cases in the entire state of Texas. So wash your hands and use your, use your brain. The census, starting on March 12th, which is two days from now, the surveys have started going out. You'll be receiving them at home between March 12th and March 20th. You can go online. There's all kinds of ways to do it. And we've got things posted on the city's website, and the library is an excellent source if you have any questions or you need any help filling out that survey. And speaking of the library, I was at the library board meeting yesterday, and I just wanted to share a couple of things from that meeting. We've had over 85,000 checkouts this year, this, this fiscal year to date, over 85,000 checkouts. And they had Teen Thursdays class, and they had 21 teens participated in the Teen Thursday. And they also have Babies and Books, and there were 37 people participating in the Babies and Books. I don't know if somebody had two babies, or there's a baby without them, I'm not sure. But Babies and Books, what a great way to introduce babies to reading and, and how the wonderful things that you can learn with books. So had a great library board meeting and enjoyed being with them. On February 24th, which was after our last council meeting, I attended the BDC meeting, and want to make sure everyone knows that the contractor for 921 is going to be Saber Construction, and that you'll start seeing some major activity in that area pretty quick. So with that, Colin, we can, we can rock and roll. The upper left-hand corner is a portrait of Claudia Willbarger Norvell, and though the men sitting around that portrait are her grandsons, Lip, Harvey, Doug, and Sam. It was an excellent presentation at the Bastrop County Historical Society. That picture is now on display, and she took care of the King's Highway. She, she saved the King's Highway. It was just a fabulous story, some really interesting stuff. I would encourage you to go to the museum and check it out. My husband and I attended the Bastrop High School Senior Serve, which is a function that they have every year to raise money for the kids' project graduation. The bottom left-hand, and I know this is a whole bunch of pictures, but the different groups of people were council, the EDC board. My favorite is the bottom left-hand corner. That's all of the city staff who are not usually in pictures, and you can tell some of them were pretty happy about that, and some of them had to kind of be drug up there. And then we've got some of our, our Main Street Board, so all of our Main Street work. I know that we're going to have a couple bumps and hiccups, but we will address them as quick as we possibly can, won't we, Mr. Smarnik? And we're rocking and rolling on that project that has been literally years in the waiting, so we're super glad to have that. The CAC Bingo Event, they do a designer purse bingo, and I, they met their goal, believe they raised around 25, between $25,000 and $30,000 in one night. They had almost twice as many people participate as they did the year before. It was really a fun event, and I was very pleased to be included in that event. Then Paribec Plumbing and Air Conditioning, they celebrated their 20th anniversary. And Councilmember Rogers, you know how hard it is to have a small business and stay in business for 20 years, so we were really proud of them. And they told me, it's Charlie and Kelly Joe, and they have to say Kelly Joe because they have a daughter-in-law that's Kelly, so that's how they tell them apart. So she, she became Kelly Joe. So congratulations to them. They've been around a long time with plumbing, so in addition to celebrating their 20th anniversary, they are also now providing HVAC. There in the upper right-hand corner, the Speak Up, Speak Out, I was one of the judges for the State Civics Day. That is Dr. Doherty and the Circa Crew, and that team, they didn't know it when we took this picture, but they ended up placing first in state. So congratulations to them, really just a fun way to see some young people being involved in civics. Right below that, I went to the BISD Board Meeting, and that was a picture that they took, and below that was proving to everyone that I did vote early in the primary election. So a lot of fun things going on, and enjoyed all of that. So the planned events between the day I had to turn in the report and today, I went to the TML Board Meeting on Friday, the 28th. The Empty Bowl Event is one of my most favorite events. I talked to Tricia, and she was saying once again, I, Councilmember Ennis, I think you said you tried two or three times and couldn't find a parking place in the, in the convention center, so just a fabulous turnout for that event. Those of you that attended the Mayor's Prayer Luncheon, Cecilia Abbott had just a fantastic speech. We really enjoyed that. All of us, actually, all the council members that are here on the dais today, attended the TML Elected Officials Conference, so Councilmember Peterson can't blame it on the TML Conference because he, he wasn't with us, but we, and we hope that he gets well. But I lied. I did not go see fools. I was exhausted when we got home, but I'm going to go next weekend. But I did volunteer as the first water stop in the Zuma Race, so that was really fun to have all those people in town. And I've already talked about the library board meeting. On the upcoming events, the South by Southwest has been canceled, but we are doing an event to announce filming in Bastrop, and that event is still going to take place, so I'll be there on Friday. And we've already kind of talked about the census. So with that, that's the end of my mayor's report. Councilmember Jackson, do you have anything to share?
I just want to say that the TML Elected Officials Conference was very good. I went to some very great sessions, and I think we all learned a few things that we could bring back to Bastrop, and it was one of the best I've gone to, actually, so that's it.
Good. Councilmember Ennis?
No, ma'am, not tonight.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, after your presentation outlining several things that you went to, I went to some of them.[739.00][739.00](laughter)
And, and I was, I'm always so glad to have your company. It was, thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
I think I only went to one of those, but, yes, Mayor, I was just going to ask Trey, our acting city manager, if he wouldn't mind putting on his calendar to get with me and, and Alan there and talk about the rodeo contracts that are coming up, if you'll just make some appointments and get us together, so we're on board before it expires.
I'll do that.
Did you tell me June? One of them's good through June?
I believe it's June or April that it's coming up, so I just want to make sure that we're prepared.
Yeah, he gave the thumbs up. He appreciates us talking about it now instead of, how come you let those expire? Right, so we'll get, thank you very much. We'll get that taken care of. All right, city manager, do you have anything for us?
I do, Mayor. I just want to take a minute to recognize Councilmember Jackson. We actually, all the way, if you remember, all the way back in November 2019, we actually submitted a letter to the, to the Parks and Recreation Society, Texas Recreation and Parks Society, excuse me, for a lifetime achievement, I'm sorry, not a lifetime achievement, honorary lifetime membership award for Mr. Jackson. And he's, it was us, the City of Elgin, Travis County, and he has about 35 years of overall experience in his professional and personal life just to promote parks. He's our Parks Board liaison here. So I wanted to take a minute to recognize him before Elgin did, so we could get a picture here with him at the dais before they did, so let me just bring this out, and it's pretty heavy, so Colin, if you want to come check this out.
Want to say something, Doc?
I guess I'll take the picture first.[852.13][852.13](laughter)
Sure, let's do that.
No, I just wanted to say, I was honored, the City of Elgin did nominate me because I was their Parks and Recreation Director at, along as well as working with the City of Austin and doing recreation programs here in Bastrop as well. I was honored to receive it for my 35 years and going of service to Parks and Recreation. And it was, they noted particularly the creation of the Kerr Community Park here in Bastrop, the Thomas Memorial Park in Elgin, and the Cedar Creek Park in Bastrop County as accomplishments in starting a department. So thank you so much for acknowledging it. I appreciate it.
Great. Congratulations.[900.32][900.32](applause) All right, council, we're going on to page two, work session, Item 5A, rece, Tracy, do you want me to do the audit first? Okay, we're going to zip down to 6A. Sorry, Colin. We're going to go to 6A, receive the comprehensive annual financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2019, which includes the independent auditor's report presented by the independent audit firm of Bell Harris Pachet, Pachet?
Pachet.
Pachet. I was so close. LLP. Go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. It's an honor to present the audit report for the city. Over on page 17 is our independent auditor's report. Very pleased to announce it's a unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance we can provide city council, that all the disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles have been included, and the financial statements are materially correct. And so that's exactly the, that's exactly the opinion you want to hear from your auditors. Also, we'll note that if there were any findings related to internal controls or compliance with laws and regulations, that would be reported in a management letter, and I'm very pleased to announce that there is no management letter associated with this year's audit as well. So again, very, very good news to hear. Also, just to point out to you that over on page 20, 30, I'm sorry, 34 and 35 is the, the ending positions for your fund balance, and the general fund fund balance came in at $3,180,000. And financial advisors will look into your fund balance as the primary indicator of financial health for a governmental unit. They will compare that to your total operating expenditures, to recommendation is to have 60 to 90 days on hand, and I think you're approximately at nine months, and so you're at a fantastic position from a fund balance perspective. So again, all good news. Also, good news over the operating results of your enterprise operation, your water and sewer fund, electrical fund, all those posted positive results before operating transfers out, so all of your operating results were in good shape. Also, your budget variances for your general fund had total positive budget variances on the revenue side, total positive budget variances on the expenditure side. So again, very good news to report. That concludes my comments. More than happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Council, you're going to be looking around page 67 of the packet. They, it's a part of another packet, so make sure the page numbers that you guys are all on the same page. And I really appreciate you having the information in advance. We've all had an opportunity to look at it. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Just a quick comment. I love seeing a clean audit, and this, and some of your comments in there certainly were indicative of the work that our finance department has, has done, and I really appreciate you pointing that out.
All right. Well, you came a long ways, but
That's all right.
Appreciate you coming, and
Delivering good news is always a good thing.
Absolutely. Let's have a round of applause for Ms. Waldron and her staff.[1090.13][1090.13](applause) It's really the entire city staff, right, Ms. Waldron, because it takes, it's, everybody's involved in that. Okay, let's see. I'm trying to let somebody else go home. We're going to zip over to items for individual consideration, and we're going to talk about Item 9A. Council, if you brought your budget with you, it is on page 235. Item 9A on the top of page three. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, pending a contract for the City of Bastrop Pine Street Drainage Improvements to 304 Construction LLC 235 in the amount of $373,875, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, and maybe some of you weren't here when we originally submitted for this, this grant, but after the 2016 floods, some HGMP money was available. We applied for this project for the engineering in Phase 1. That was awarded and has been complete. We applied for Phase 2. That's what we're here tonight to do. Mr. Tim Sanders from Beaufort Engineering is here to answer any big technical engineering questions, but essentially, you can find this on page 235 of your budget. This is a project that we planned on and talked about over the last two budget years, and it'll be repairs and improvements to the Pine Street ditch just here behind City Hall, and it actually came in under the, the opinion, the opinion of probable cost. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, I'm sure that you all noted that the low bidder this time was, it was a complete bid, so that's why they're recommending it. I always, as a former contractor, like to see bids that are this close together. There was less than 5% between the two low bids. It means everybody's on the, on the right page and bidding the same. Now, somebody who works at JKB did, had to have done a thumb error. When you bid $4 million to relocate a barrier, I felt really bad for them, and I didn't go back and run the math to see if they would have been low bidder or not.
Yes, ma'am. They actually, they were low bidder by about $2,400 from 304 Construction, and basically, the unit rate that they wrote in was different from the numerical value that they wrote in, and we explicitly say in there
Yeah.
If there's a difference, the written rate prevails, and so that ended up kicking them from low bid to high bid, so that's the reason they have the $4 million.
Yeah, my heart goes out to them. I have been on, on that side, so that means that the bids were really, really close.
Very, very tight, yeah. $2,400 on your two low bids. It's hard to beat that on that size project.
Well, there's, there's lots of work out there, so
Right, right.
JKB will get another choice, a chance, but when I saw that, my heart sank because I've, those kind of things happen.
And the number of bids, too, having seven bids,
Yes.
That's always a good thing, to get the best value for the city.
Having the bids that close is certainly a good reflection on the type of drawings that you put together, so congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Council? Any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson. Second, and second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ennis?
This is, it just, I just wanted to say, it's always nice when it comes in under the amount that we budgeted.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry, I thought you had turned it off and I didn't, I didn't catch. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you all so much.
And city manager, when will we see a notice to proceed? Because that's going to be the next thing. When are we, when, I thought you guys approved that. When are they going to get started?
I have it here to sign, and I'll send it to Tim in the morning once this is, meeting's over.
So they get two weeks or?
Generally 30 days.
30 days, okay.
Usually, it's typically between four to six weeks when we issue that notice to proceed. I'll get the notice of award from Trey. We'll get the contracts together to send off to the contractor, so he can get his payment and performance bonds. Then once we do receive that back, then we'll send it to the attorney to do one final review of the bonds. They've seen all the bid documents already, but from my understanding, once we get the signed contract backs before the city signs, we'll send those to the attorney for their final review.
Okay, so by the end of April, for sure, we'll start seeing some work.
Yes, ma'am.
I just thought we would set that expectation now, so, okay. All right, being respectful of the folks in the audience, we're going to keep going and go to the next item, 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-29, approving a master sign plan of allowing an entry monument sign and wayfinding kiosk sign program for the Piney Creek Bend subdivision attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repeals and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is something we've talked about in the past couple of meetings. We even had an executive session with us to discuss the possibility of this being a city-run program. But where we left this in the last meeting was that Mr. Kapatrick would come back and have you a master sign plan, which is attached into your packet, and it talks about the route, and we're going to approve the route, and the final location will actually be determined by staff, just to make sure that it's not in somebody's way, but it will all be on private property, and it will all be taken care of by KB Homes. And Mr. Kapatrick here is also, if we need to answer any questions, but with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Do, do we have the map? That might be a good thing to show on the
We do not have the map in the packet, but we can do that, I believe.
I'm sorry. I'm not trying to make it hard on Colin. You guys are all familiar with the map, correct? You saw it in the plan?[1471.83][1471.83](laughter) And I, and if I remember, pardon? Yeah. It's 10 signs, is that right?
It is, and it's all, again, it's all on private property. It's essentially
It's page 424, if you guys are looking for it in the packet. 424.
And, and what that does is pick up people that are coming into the city and working to, and downtown, and it brings them out to KB's new subdivision there at Piney Creek, and, and just, it's more advertisement. It's a cleaner way to do that, where a lot of you see bandit signs on the weekends. What this does is promote, and it actually can be used by other home builders, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the businesses that allow that or the private property owners that allow it on their property can add signs as well.
That is, that is correct. What the Master Sign Plan, Conference of Side Plan allows for is a community identification topper on the page following the, the map is an example of that, identical to what I showed you all back last year. It will have home builder signage on it. It will have two community wayfinding signage kiosks or panels is what they're referred to as. So as you're picking up off of right here on Chestnut Street, it'll say downtown this way, or whatever the city decides that they want to use as the markers on them. And then it does allow for one, since they're going on private property, it does allow one panel for the private property owner, should they so desire to, to use it, so. And they're, one of the reasons, we're, we're going to size them according to the number of panels. If we don't need the private property owner panel, or there's not an appropriate panel on there, we can size them accordingly, and so we want to make them as effective as possible, but as unintrusive as possible as well, so. And we will bring back the specific locations with the authorization to staff whenever we're permitting the signs, so that they can go out and look at it, and we make sure we're placing them correctly.
Councilmember Rogers?
Trey, I know you said this, but I just want to make sure that it's going to be on private property. You guys are going to get the approval to put, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct.
And whenever you're done building there, will they be, you'll come back and take them out?
So there's a two-year, it's a two-year contract. There is an option for extensions if it takes longer than two years, and then when we pull our last building permit, that ceases the program, and then we've got a time period after that to go and remove them.
All right, so it's just, you've taken care of all the rights, and everybody's good, happy to go.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Ennis?
So you will remove them after your, your sales are through?
That is correct.
Okay. And I looked at this map. These are just the routes where they would be located. The, the, you'll, you'll have another map when you actually get the locations?
Correct. Whenever, the next step after this, if you also desire to approve this, is we'll bring a package into the planning department, which will be every individual location with proof of ownership, an agent authorization giving us the authority to, to pull a sign permit, and then for each location, we'll go pull a sign permit for that location. There's a process in here that we'll meet with staff and go out and actually walk the locations and go, yes, this is where we're going to put it, and so that everybody's on the same page, that it's safe for everybody, we're all in agreement before we go out there and install them. One of the things that we visited with Trey about is we're going to try to bring in a complete package of all the sign locations at one time. That doesn't mean that there's not going to be one or two down the road. What I explained to Trey is we may lose a location because construction happens, or it needs to move for some reason, so we'd come back, and if we had to move a sign, we'd re-permit it at that time. There's also two governmental sites, and those, those sites may come in later because at least one of the governmental authorities could take some time to actually make a decision, so.
Remind me again, who decides on, we'll have KB or your, your side?
Correct.
Your bar on there?
a package into the planning department, which will be every individual location with proof of ownership, an agent authorization giving us the authority to pull a sign permit. And then for each location, we'll go pull a sign permit for that location. There's a process in here that we'll meet with staff and go out and actually walk the locations and go, yes, this is where we're going to put it. And so that everybody's on the same page, that it's safe for everybody, we're all in agreement before we go out there and install them. One of the things that we visited with Trey about is we're going to try to bring in a complete package of all the sign locations at one time. That doesn't mean that there's not going to be one or two down the road. What I explained to Trey is we may lose a location because construction happens or it needs to move for some reason. So we'd come back, and if we had to move a sign, we'd re-permit it at that time. There's also two governmental sites, and those sites may come in later because at least one of the governmental authorities could take some time to actually make a decision, so.
Remind me again, who decides on, we'll have KB or your side?
Correct.
Your bar on there. Who determines the other bars that are on?
So the community interest panel will be decided by the city.
Is there only one?
There's two. So as you're coming into Main Street on Chestnut, you may decide to go Visitor Center Left, Opera House Downtown. But when you're farther out, up here by City Hall, you may be going downtown or City Hall here or Convention Center here. And so y'all will be able to decide what the best use of those panels are and what's in the best interest of your visitor program and how y'all would like to direct traffic and what the best destination for them is.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions? Mayor Pro-Tim Nelson?
Yeah. What do you estimate to be your response time? Should there be damage to a sign or the aesthetics of the sign are not quite as pleasing as what we collaboratively agree to be pleasing?
So if there's an issue, the sign contractor, either I'll be your point of contact at KB Home, that's also why the sign contractor is listed on here. We'll make sure that their contact information is with the city manager and with the planning department. If they reached out to us today, we have somebody in town that could be there within 24 hours. The sign contractor, this is their business, and so they have multiple crews out installing and removing panels and putting up new panels. And so they've got folks that are out there in the field. They're based out of Cedar Park, and so they've got the resources to prob, I don't want to commit for them, but I would think that they would be able to respond within 24, 48 hours, 72 at the worst-case scenario. But we've got people here in the community. Our project manager for Piney Creek lives here, our sales counselor lives here in Bastrop, and so we could have somebody on site fairly quickly. Our construction teams are available to us if we need them. If we need to go remove a sign real quick, we've got folks here to do that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Colin. I know we made that hard on you, but thank you for getting the map up. So my understanding, when I look at this map, is there will be no more than 10 signs and they will be located on Main Street, Cedar, Chestnut 150, or Carter.
So basically, they will take you down to that Chestnut and Main Street. So there'll be three on each side of Chestnut, coming off of 71 and off of 95. And then there'll be three to four off of Carter Street going to where Tracy's Drive-In's at. And so everything for us is getting to, is driving traffic to Tracy's Drive-In because that is the most direct route, and those three are, we're trying to convene at that one spot. And so we'll be coming off at 95 in two spots, one at Chestnut, one at Carter Street, and then off the Frontage Road into downtown to Main Street.
So Councilmember Ennis, I'm assuming part of your question was you wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be in the middle of the block, in the middle of Water Street kind of thing, right? That it's the main thoroughfare, so it will be along these red arrows?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
The other thing that it says within there is it can only be on commercial or undeveloped property. It cannot be on, we can't go get permission from a private residence. So that's why, like, the Carter Street is kind of tricky. There's really, when you look at going down Carter Street, you've got 95, you've got the school district, and you have Tracy's Drive-In. And then, when you're coming down Chestnut in either direction, you have a few more options, but there's only really a handful, a couple of locations that really work really, really well. And we've been in touch with the vast majority of those owners already. We have one owner who hasn't returned our calls yet, but we do know where they're at and we know how to find them.
All righty. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Thank y'all for your consideration of this.
Thank you. I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers. I have a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. All right, Counsel, we're here, and we're going to get rid of all of Trey's stuff. I think the majority of everything left is Tracy, and I know Ms. Gleason has one. Let's go to 9C. If you've got your budget with you, it is on page 242. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-26 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to perform the design and coordination with the City of Bastrop's consultant, landscape architect, and construct the Fisherman's Park Wheeled Sports Plaza. It has been years in the making. Phase One to Artisan Concrete Services, Inc., in the amount of $246,000 as attached as Exhibit A authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one's near and dear to my heart. Actually, the first council meeting that I ever showed up at, it was the Parks Board up here speaking on behalf of this Wheeled Sports Plaza or skate park, if you will. And it's been, well, the last eight years I've been here, we've been working on it constantly. So everybody's super excited. We actually met with the Parks Board per your request last Thursday. That's why the packet was the same. We had to meet with them just before the packet, or just after the packet went out. We all had a great discussion. It turns out that they're completely in agreement with the contractor. We had a 5-0 unanimous vote. Staff recommendation is there, the Parks Board is there, and now it's here for your approval.
So consultant has approved it, staff has approved it, and the Parks Board has approved it.
That's correct.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Joe? Councilmember Jackson?
No, I'd just like to say that I found out from the Parks Board, since I was at the elected officials conference, I couldn't attend as the Parks Board liaison. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but it was like our acting city manager said, it was a unanimous decision. And it is a long time in coming, so I'm very excited about this because we've been trying to get a skate park for many, many, many years. And a lot of the kids that had wanted it are now adults, but I guess their children will now enjoy the skate park.
I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I, I.
Mayor Pro-Tim Nelson?
It cannot go unsaid, the work that the Parks Board has put into this over the past several years.
Absolutely.
And their absolute commitment to this project. I recall the public hearings that we had, and almost every one of the members of the Parks Board were there visiting with kids and advocates for the skate parks. I wanted to make sure that we mentioned them.
Spoken like the previous Parks liaison.
I'm proud of my children.
There you go. There you go.
And I will pass that on to the Parks Board when we have our next meeting, too. If they're not watching, they're probably watching, though.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Let's have a round of applause for the sports car. Yay! That has been a long time coming. Do we need to take a quick break?
No.
Okay, all right. Trey left to get paper towels. That won't take long. How about if we go back to 5A, Colin? And I promise I won't skip around anymore. I sort of promise. Councilmember Rogers thinks I might not be really promising. Okay, we're back on the top of page two. We're doing item 5A. Receive presentation and hold discussion with NewGen Strategies and Solutions regarding the city's water and wastewater rate ordinance update and established rates. Our consultant's flight got canceled. So she does not look like Chris, but she knows everything Chris was going to say. So Ms. Waldron?
We did, we had a call with him this afternoon, and Trey and I are going to tag-team this presentation, actually. But I'll get it started. I just wanted to kind of go back and remind counsel and the public kind of the journey that we've been going on this, and I've included it in the packet. But in May of 2018, we had a contract with NewGen to conduct a water and wastewater rate study. And so in November 2018, they brought that study back, and there was some recommendations at that time. In November of 2019, we had another meeting. This was when we were kind of refreshing what we had brought back in 2018 and having the discussions about the changes that we were proposing. And at that point, there were some concerns about some of the changes. We've gone back and talked with NewGen and gone over all of the changes that were being recommended and are bringing back the ones we feel like are necessary to meet our five-year forecast. They're ones that we need in order to move forward with all of these projects that we have going with water and wastewater. And so I tried to show on your staff report what we have dropped and eliminated. They were more recommendations, but they didn't have a real change in, like, the rate tiers. We've let that go. Whether we have five or three, it wasn't going to make that big of a difference in the big scheme of things. So the ones we are bringing back, these two basically just have to do with kind of cleaning up how our rates are being established. The first one is just to make sure that outside city rates in our rate tables are always 1.5 of our inside rates. And I think that there wasn't consistency in that, and that's why they were recommending this, be consistent with that. So there was a little bit of cleanup on that one, and that's pretty much what that talks about. These are where our outside city limit accounts are, and so.
And some of those are already paying 1.5? Or are they paying a variety?
Some of them are, but some of them, it wasn't consistent across the rate table. So we just were cleaning that up. And those changes would have been reflected in the ordinance or will be reflected in the ordinance. The other one is the demand charge by meter size. And there's basically a multiplier that gets applied to, if you say a 3/4-inch meter is one, there's a multiplier for each size of meter. And our rates did not adhere to that multiplier. And do you want to elaborate on that particular?
Sure. What we're doing is we're bringing everything to the American Water Works Association standard. And this is how I explained it to Tracy today when we were talking about it. If you have a 3/4-inch meter and it equals one, and you have a 2-inch meter and it equals five, for example, that's not the exact number. The point is, what we have to do is tier this because somebody with a five can draw much more water into their system. So what you're doing is you're meeting the A W D A standard, which is the industry standard that everybody uses, and we're bringing that along in phasing. So bottom line is, if you have a larger meter, and you can, this affects everything from an inch and a half and above, by the way. So if you have a larger meter and you have the ability to draw more water quicker, we have to do certain things to our system to be able to maintain that. We have to have more tanks, we have to have bigger pumps. So what you're doing is, in that rate structure, is you're actually paying to make sure that it's fair, is what it is. It makes sure that everybody pays based on their available usage.
Because once they have the, once they have the meter, we don't have any control over how much water they pull from it.
That's correct.
The controlling device is the meter.
That's correct.
So, and then they'll be charged by usage. And how many times do they pay for that meter, Trey?
How many times do they pay for the meter?
Well, the, yeah, the rate that we're talking about is the base fee that would be charged every single month.
Okay.
Right.
So there is a.
It depends on the size of the meter, but we would have to check, because some meters are $250 and some meters are $20,000. So it depends on the size of the meter. So if you have a really large meter and it's $15,000 to $20,000, it takes you a long time to catch up at $50.
Right.
Right, so what we're doing is making the base rate.
But they'll pay an impact fee to get that meter.
Yes.
And they'll pay that impact fee one time. And then.
That's correct.
Once they get that meter and after they've paid the impact fee, that meter is a demand on our system, and we have to be able to provide to that meter size all the time. So that's why that's their base fee all the time.
That is accurate.
So that encourages them to not oversize the meter but not undersize the meter, and it lets us, it keeps us all on the same page.
That's correct. You're right sizing it, if you will, for what you need.
And so this table shows the phasing, where we're going to spread it out over four years because we didn't want it to have such a large impact immediately. And so the recommendations for the changes for fiscal 2020, of course, we won't be, these changes won't go into effect if you approve the ordinance until April 1st. We will send out notices to make sure that everybody is aware of the changes. But this is the table that reflects those changes over the next four years.
So the, excuse me, Ms. Waldron, but I think the most important thing, Counsel, for you to note on this page is that 91% of the meters are house meters, and you see that there's not a change in the rate.
The change doesn't start till 1 1/2 inch and up.
Which is honestly a pretty good-sized meter. I mean, that's, so.
Mainly your commercial and your.
Yeah, that's your ability between 15 gallons a minute and probably 50 gallons a minute.
So I just, I want, the vast majority of people, this is going to be the whatever because it's not going to be an impact to them at all. So I just don't want someone to have a juicy headline that makes everyone in the city think that their rates are going up based on their meter size. But that would never happen. So just want to make sure we're all on the same page. For residents, it all stays the same.
So the next section is really about policy and billing information. The charge for commercial, we implemented one of the recommendations last year, which was to take commercial out of the averaging and sewer, you know, commercial pays for what they use. And so we had already implemented that change.
And one of the main reasons we did that is most commercial have a separate irrigation meter. So they're not really, there isn't a fluctuation, and that was just one more thing to try to keep track of in billings.
Right. So they were pulled out, and that was effective March 29. The other one is formally codifying the fact that multi-units are billed according to the per units, so the minimum charge times per unit. The majority of our accounts, we are already billing. This is already a billing that we are doing. But we have done a recent audit, and we are going to have to go in and get everybody in compliance with this. But when we went back to our actual ordinance, it's not in our ordinance that we do this, but the bills have been like this for going back before I got here. So we're really trying to codify what our practices are. So that's what these changes are recommending. This specific.
But that bill's going to go to the property owner, correct?
Yes.
Not, not.
Well, that is one of the things that we are recommending, is that the landlord or the property owner receives the bill, and it's, it'll be multiplied by how many units are at that property. That way, the city is not, we're not a third party between that property owner and that tenant. And if one of those tenants move out, if the bill were to be put in their name or they're getting a charge, it just makes it very complicated. So it'll be on the property owner and.
We don't need to be, Counsel, are we in agreement that we don't need to be in the property management business?
Right.
The city brings the utility to the meter, and that is to a property owner meter, and then we're out of the business. And they can take care of it, they can pass it on, they can not pass it on. There's many ways to take care of it.
You know, Chris was saying, that's what the note down here about the multifamily and the rules in Chapter 24 of the P U C, that basically defines how a property owner can push that along to their tenants. And there's several options that they have, but we're not really involved in that process.
But that's between them and the PUC rules. Like, we don't want to be involved in that.
Right. And he had just provided some comparisons there in your packet. We're pretty much falling close to the middle of all of these comparisons, whether it's regional or size of city. And that is all I have, unless you have questions.
Counsel, Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you clearing up that billing situation. There were several people that were confused. Somebody's getting a bill, someone's not getting a bill. So I think this whole thing will.
And that starts in April? When will, for, because we, we all know there's a favorite commercial property that's got some concerns.
The effective date of the ordinance, if passed, will be April 1st.
April 1st. Okay. Well, I would think if council doesn't have a lot of questions, Ms. Waldron and Mr. Jobe, you did an outstanding job for Chris. That's good, good work. Did you have something else?
Well, I was going to move to approve, but Bill put his light on.
Well, this is just the presentation.
I want to approve it now.
Okay. Well, if you want to approve it now, Colin, it's Councilmember Rogers' fault that we're, we're jumping. So we're going to jump over to 9D. 9D is consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2020-05 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinance, Article 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, Sections 13.02.002, Wastewater Service Charge, 13.02.004, Water Service Charges, and 13.02.008, Billing, Discontinuance of Service, Amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article A 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, Section A 13.02.002, Wastewater Service Charge, and A 13.02.004, Water Service Charge as Attached in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Repeal or Severability, Providing for an Effective Date, Codification, Proper Notice and Meeting, and Move to Include on the March 24th Consent Agenda for a Second Reading.
Move to approve.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to add, the difference between what we just talked about in the presentation and the actual ordinance is we do have the $5 increase on the base fee for the sewer, which was part of our five-year forecast of trying to.
Spread it out and not do it once.
Spread it out. And so that was always a part of the plan and it was in the budget book that way. So that, that's just the only difference between the changes that we just talked about in this ordinance.
So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Councilmember Ennis, are you still cool with that?
That, that was already included, right?
It was.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, you're just saying that what we're voting on has that one difference than what you just talked about.
The presentation, yeah.
And council, I think those of us that were there back in that march, we talked about just, even though we didn't know what the final number was going to be, start doing it now.
Trying to spread it over time.
It had been so many years and, and don't make it be a, a big jump at one time. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
And a second. Sorry, Colin.
And a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
The motion passes. We will go back to page two. We're on item 6B, Update of a Funding Opportunity from a Partner Organization for Main Streets Program 2020 Table on Main. Counsel, you're on page 189 of your packet.
Good evening. Back on October 8th, 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution Number R 2019-90, approving the financial management policy. That policy requires that City Council be informed of a funding request from a partner organization at a public meeting. So we are here tonight because the Main Street Advisory Board is preparing for our fourth annual Table on Main event, which is a fundraising event for the Main Street program. And with that, they have come out with their 2020 event sponsorship and table sales packet. So it is already been delivered to 100-plus businesses in the Bastrop area to request sponsorships and table sales. Next week, it will be emailed out to another 200 businesses and released publicly for consumption. And then on April 1st, we will release individual ticket sales. So with that, the Main Street Advisory Board would like to deliver a sponsorship and table sale packet to our community partners, Visit Bastrop and Bastrop Economic Development Corporation.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? So I have a clarification. Go ahead, Councilmember Ennis.
What are the levels?
So there are several. Table sales, the platinum level is 2,000. There is a silver level, platinum, gold level at 1,200, a silver level at 750. And then there are add-ons, like you can sponsor the beverage napkins or the dessert containers or the stage, things like that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So council, I think it's important that we remind folks, she's asking about two organizations, Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and Visit Bastrop. Bastrop Economic Development Corporation is funded out of its own taxing fund. So that is not money that comes through the general fund. That's economic development tax dollars. Visit Bastrop is funded out of hot funds. That is also not general tax dollars. I believe this became an issue when we said where we, as the City of Bastrop, we fund a portion of the Main Street program, i.e. Ms. Gleason and other folks that work with her. And what we didn't want was to have other people who are in that same organization so that we're moving money from one bucket to another bucket, correct? So I, I very much appreciate you following the policy. We're wanting to make sure that we're clear with who we're asking. And my understanding is this request is going to those organizations. Each of those organizations have a board and they can decide what level they want to do, if they want to participate, how to use those tickets to best take care of their strategy and their objectives.
Yes, ma'am.
So this makes perfect sense. And this isn't on for voting. This is a matter of you're just sharing information.
The policy states notification.
So is there, does anybody have any concerns or any other questions, Mr. Jobe?
Well, no concerns. We just wanted to make sure you were aware for transparency, transparency reasons. And that's the only reason it's here, so we can notify you, so.
Councilmember Ennis?
I have a concern with asking Visit Bastrop for, for sponsorship. I don't with BEDC. You did say Visit Bastrop, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
For that very reason, you just said, it's coming out of the same pot.
Well, it's coming out of hot funds as opposed to general fund.
And I, I question whether Table on Main puts heads in beds.
Hmm.
It's nothing against Table on Main.
I completely understand.
I, I want to make that clear. I, I just think that their charge is to, to, to market the city, to bring more people to our town. And I don't know if Table on Main is more of a local type function. And that's my, that's my reasoning behind it. If we were voting for it, I would vote against it.
Does anybody else have a comment on that?
But you did say it was up to their board, so correct?
Well, I was getting ready to go to the city attorney. Since it's in the ordinance that we have to be notified, if council has a concern, can we give direction to staff to not do that? Or how would, how do you think we should best proceed? Or do you want a chance to read it and we'll come back to it?
Simply looking at this financial policy, I think you've been provided notice. I think you do have the opportunity to provide feedback to them. And the sort of feedback that Councilman Ennis is providing is certainly germane. And then they can decide at that point what they want to do with it and do they think it does meet the standards for the hotel occupancy tax funding.
And that they would be the Visit Bastrop board?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Are you satisfied with that, Mr. Ennis?
Not much else I can do about it.
Yeah, that's kind of what it's feeling like at this point.
As I said, if we were voting on it, I would vote against it, but we can't vote on it, so.
Since the ordinance is written as notification. Councilmember Jackson?
After listening to Councilmember Ennis, I tend to agree with him. I mean, again, it's nothing against the Main Street program or Table on Main, but it is more of a local event, I think, than putting heads in beds. And I would tend to agree with his conversation and his comments.
So council and city attorney, I guess at this point, we've given feedback to them. Certainly anybody can visit with the Visit Bastrop board and then we can have a discussion later about if we want to change the verbiage of the policy. Is that correct?
That's correct. And one thing you can do, I, I'm not familiar with how this is administered, but if there's a concern, the Visit Bastrop could always require that surveys be done among participants to actually quantify whether or not the heads and beds test is met or not and provide data for future appropriations.
One of the other things I've heard them talk about before is if they are trying to get somebody here for a festival, you know, I, I think the biggest concern is if it's, if it's somebody's staff is sitting at a local event and it's been funded by hot funds. Is that part of your cause or is it more of just the purpose of hot funds?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I've had folks say to me, it's $100 a ticket. I'm a citizen and I'd like to go, but I can't afford $100 a ticket. And there's five city employees or Visit Bastrop employees that are, that are, are able to attend the event. And, and they will say, I paid for it. And technically, they did not, but unless they've stayed in a hotel. But that doesn't change public perception of you have staff attending an event that I can't afford to attend. So I didn't know if that was part of your concern or if you're mainly Visit Bastrop's with being funded by hot funds, it's put heads in beds and you don't think that Table on Main meets that criteria?
I think it's all of the above.
All of the above. Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, with that in mind, I, I think that Visit Bastrop should have the opportunity to, to, to show how their sponsorship of the table fits, fits within their strategy. And if there's something strategic to their purchasing of tables, such as inviting people from outside of the community to invest in our community, I think it's, I think it's very valuable.
Sure. If they, if they can, if they have some justification, then, I mean, we don't tell them how to market. And if this is a marketing contribution that they can, that they can justify, that's a horse of a different color.
Okay.
I'm sorry, mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think that kind of falls under the same thing even with BEDC. They need to, if they're going to sponsor and get the, you know, their, all those seats, hopefully they use it in a, in a wise way to what's most benefit, benefit for their organization, not for staff.
I would hope that both of those organizations would invite people to attend. I think it's an outstanding event and would invite clients from each organization to, to attend.
It's a great way to showcase our downtown. It really is.
It really is.
Very cool event. Mr. Jobe, did we cover everything?
I just wanted to clarify, we were letting you know that we were going to hand out that sponsorship. They have in no way made a commitment. So they still have the option of absolutely not, not sponsoring. We just wanted to make sure you were aware that we're going to send them a sponsorship application.
Well, hopefully they've watched tonight and they understand what we're, what our thinking is.
I will give them a heads up.
And thank you so much for following the policy and giving us the heads up because it's way better to have this conversation now than, well, wait a minute, I thought, you know, this is absolutely the way to do it. So everybody wants to do the right thing. We, we trust those boards with a lot bigger sums of money than what we're talking about. So we trust them to do a good job. Thank you very much, Ms. Gleason. We are at citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor.
We are done with citizen comments. We are on the consent agenda and there's only two items, so I'm going to read them quickly. Item 8A, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the February 25th, 2020 regular meeting. And item 8B, action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2020-04 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, canceling the May 2nd, 2020 general election and declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Is there any motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, council. We're now, we have two items left on the individual consideration. We're at the bottom of page three. We're on item 9E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2028 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving additional funding to Visit Bastrop in the amount of $50,000 to be used for special event funding, providing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening again. I apologize, I don't have my staff report in front of me, but I put in the staff report, the meeting at which Visit Bastrop was presenting, I believe their January, their last quarter report. And it was brought up that they had already given out the majority of their special event money that they had been given for fiscal 2020 and what would be the method in which they could request further funding in that category. And so they did submit a letter and I have created this resolution, letting you know that there is contingency money that we had put in the hot fund and that my next item actually includes, if y'all approve this, you will be approving using $50,000 of that contingency fund to, to give to.
And that's a hot funds contingency fund?
Yes.
Okay. And the, we had set that contingency fund amount, correct? Weren't we trying to build that up or remind us of that?
No, we always put a consent, I can't say that word tonight.
As opposed to a reserve?
Contingency, yes. So that during the year.
If something happens.
If something happens, we have it already built into the budget. It's just a matter of moving it and using it.
Okay. And I was getting myself mixed up with that's nothing to do with the reserve fund. That's a separate light item of contingency.
Correct.
So you're saying it's there and our vote would allow you to move money out of that contingency fund?
And the contingency, it's above and beyond what we hold as reserves. Yes, absolutely.
All right. Counsel, and you did really, it was the January 28th meeting.
Good, okay.
So that was when they came. And I think, counsel, you remember, she showed the numbers of the return on the, the first $75,000 that they had. Well, all three lights are on. Councilmember Jackson?
I was just going to move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis, but I have two lights on. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, you know, I, we've already had the motion, but I think it's, I think it's indicative of the success of Visit Bastrop and they can show what they did for $75,000 and they're looking at $50,000 to deliver another $430,000 worth of pre-event funding. I just think it's wonderful, pre-vent economic impact, I should say.
Drives up those hot funds and, you know.
Yes, absolutely.
Get that engine working. Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to state that I know they're asking for $50,000. That's not exactly, we have a little over 100 budgeted for that contingency. There'll still be some funds left in that, in that contingency, correct?
Yes, I think there was 107.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody knew that it wasn't like they're draining that fund. We'll still have some fund left if something happens that they need the contingency for because that's what it's there for.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that it wasn't draining that, that fund.
Good point. Good point. Councilmember Ennis?
Does that take us down so low that safe sales, you know, with what's going on right now with the virus business, if our sales tax plummets?
Our reserve is a full year's worth of revenue. So it's like.
Of hot funds?
2.8, yeah.
Okay. So we're, we're safe.
The contingency is just, yes, it's just a budgeted item.
Kind of like miscellaneous, right?
Right. But it doesn't dip into the reserve that we hold. We always hold that reserve.
Great.
Yes.
My second question is, and I don't know city manager, if this should, request should come from you, it'd be interesting to have a list of all the organizations, all the events that Visit Bastrop supported with the, what now, 125,000?
I think it was in their quarterly report.
Yeah, it was in her, 75 was in her January 28th report.
She listed the, she listed the events that they had funded.
Then the 50.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. So they'll, I, I think they are expecting to report how they, because we're giving them 50 and then people have to apply for it and they evaluate it and dole it out and then we'll, we'll get a report. But you want to just know how they spent it.
I just want to see the organizations say, you know.
Okay.
That, that's correct and they would add that in their quarterly reports.
Great.
All right. I have a motion and a second with no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. We're on 9F, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2020-06
Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance Number 2020-06 of the City Council of the City of Bassdrop, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the March 24th, 2020, City Council consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Okay, so here we go.
You did a really good job on this, by the way.
Yeah, hopefully, I won't confuse you with my words. I was very detailed in my staff report. The very first budget amendment is truly just the certificate of obligation we just closed in February. This is the, we received the final debt schedule and this is just amending that budget to include anything that we would have to pay out for that bond for this year. So it was 37, 941 in interest is what we have on that one. Budget Amendment Two, Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District. This is an in-and-out. We had a parcel that closed in February, January. And they went ahead and paid their capital assessment upfront.
Must be a commercial piece of property.
It was. It was the 40 acres that, the last piece.
So it's paid off?
So they have paid their capital assessment. So we had to go in and bring that revenue into our budget, but also increase the development payment out to the developer. And so that's what this is. It's a, it's a wash as far as it's concerned, but we did need the budget amendment in order to be able to pay that developer that payment.
Pretty hard for you to predict that last September.
No, I would not have predicted that. Budget Amendment Three, General Fund. Trying not to make this too complicated, when we did the budget, we had a transfer in from the Innovation Fund to make sure that General Fund was at its 25% reserve. After we have closed 19, fiscal 19, we were, we ended up better than we projected. And so we don't need this transfer in. And that's what this is. It's just saying, don't need it to come into the General Fund. Want to leave it into the, in the Innovation Fund. We ended up, I think I had 27% as of the end of fiscal 19. So we were fine in the General Fund. If you notice on that page that I gave you, the revenue and the expenditures zeroed out for fiscal 2020. The 198 was actually in addition to. So you can see that. So the, this amendment is related. So it is in the Innovation Fund instead of doing a transfer out of 198,000. We wanted to go back to the discussion we had. There were a few items that we wanted to be able to fund with the fiscal 2020 budget.
Ms. Waldron, if, Council, if you've got your budget, if you look at page 211, you'll see the 198, 991. That'll be helpful to you. It's page 211. I just think it'll help us.
Definitely.
Got it?
It makes total sense to me sometimes. It's clear as mud. So on this budget amendment, I'm just asking that we take that transfer out and we apply it to those requests that could not be funded with the kind of unknown information. Now we have more information. I put in there the detail, I just snipped it right out of that memorandum as far as the computer replacement program that we wanted to fund.
And I don't know if this is a question for the city manager or for you, but Council, I recall that we said we did not want the customer software to be on the wish list. We wanted it included in the budget. But this is taking care of it anyway.
It was included in the budget. It's in the Innovation Fund already.
Okay.
And I may not have remembered or said that, but.
But it doesn't matter because it's a different number and you guys have been evaluating software, correct?
It's already taken care of.
Right, yes. So this is just the two items that were left and they are very important. The 76,000 is networking server equipment. And our IT department is very anxious that this gets approved because we have some very old computers that need to be replaced and some equipment that's at its life end. Amendment Five is water wastewater fund, super easy. This was insurance proceeds. We had damage, we got the check. I've increased their expense. These type of amendments are just an in-and-out, no effect on fund balance. Yes.
Can I ask a question about number four?
Yes.
At one point, we were talking about a customer relations system that our council liaison would use.
Yes, that's what we were talking about just a second ago. That's already.
I know, I'm clarifying.
Yes.
In your, in your description here, you say that that's being taken care of with the, where is it? That you found that one, a software that you're buying is, takes care of that also?
Yes, everything that we've looked at as far as permitting software, there's a more robust system that comes along with that for community or citizen engagement. So you may actually, there's two portals. One that staff could see. We can type in there the address and it pulls it up on a map and shows exactly what you're looking for, how many permits, where they're at in the process. But you, as a citizen, can also do the same thing. So in that engagement customer portal, if you have a question about 215 Walnut, for example, you would type that in and it would give you a list of, again, it's limited on not exactly where they're at in the permit stage, how many permits were issued, how many work orders? Was there something for a pothole? Was it ever fixed? So it really is a good customer engagement piece that allows not only the customer to do that if they want to, but everybody who answers the phone to be able to pick up and enter the same address at the same software and answer the question over the phone.
Let me ask you this. Say a citizen has a complaint. I've received one today about the race this weekend and closing down some streets. Can it handle that kind of comment?
Yeah, any, any process that we, so if you, if you want to make a complaint, yes, it can handle that. But any kind of process that's going on, if they wanted to know about the special events and that was part of the permitting, it would tell you that we could, we could do that.
Okay.
It is that robust and that healthy. You'd have to build each step. And we haven't built them all yet, but yes. It's a really good customer relations portal, if you will, as part of the permitting software. They have work order software, several things. So if you could put a complaint in and we can take care of it and go straight to the right person, they may patch a pothole or take your complaint, at least respond.
Since that was one of Council's major issues, I want to make sure that we were taking care of that in that description. Thank you.
Yeah, the software, the brief conversations I've had with the city manager, I know there's several of you guys evaluating software. Have you, do you think you're close to making a recommendation to us?
We are. We were, we were just going to finalize that in the next week or so and, and make a decision. We want everybody's input, of course. But we want to also select something that's best for citywide. So we're really trying to weigh the difference between what, while permitting software is important, if we can get permitting software and something that's really spectacular for the customer, we want to weigh that. It's a little more weighting, I would think, and then make a choice based on that.
Council, he's indicated that, like if you're answering the phone, you would be, you would have access to the, it creates a database. So if somebody's covering phones, they can add in a complaint. They can look it up and see that work order was issued and the crew is scheduled to be there on Friday kind of thing.
Yeah, it's a cloud-based software, so you know, everybody can log in and have access to it.
And if you do, do not want to call anybody, you just want to make a complaint yourself, you're welcome to do that right then and it sends it to the same person, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
So with all that being said, what do you kind of think the timeline of that's figuring out which one you want? Now that we've told the public it's coming, are we thinking by the end of the year?
I think he's hoping in the next couple of meetings, they're going to, they're, they've been working on it. And because they heard from Council clearly that it was a high priority and they're getting close.
I just want the public to hear that's hearing this, that like, is that going to be until 2024?
So we can manage expectations. I know what you mean. So we're going to talk about, let's make a choice over the next week or two. Contact that software company. Then we have to build the steps and processes, which should take six to eight weeks. And then they implement it over another four weeks. And then we're talking about rollout and communications and things of that nature. But it would be, and I'm trying to give a solid date.
Midsummer, probably.
Yes, yes, I would think midsummer before the end of the fiscal year is what I'm hoping.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so that's great. But we can just be given the, we've picked the software. Okay, now we've done this. And the city manager, you can report back, like we've got the steps in or this is the module we're launching first or what, you know, just let us know where we are.
And I think the first step would be the permitting software, which was a big priority. And then we would add the other modules, if you will, as the budget allows or we may add more during the next year, in the next budget year.
Well, it is a great way to spend this money that was in the Innovation Fund and a priority for Council, so, okay. Good job. All right, Tracy, keep going.
All right, so the last two amendments just have to do with two bond funds. We are just taking that available fund balance now that we've closed fiscal 19, know what that ending fund balance is and rolling it into this budget year and applying it to these projects that are already being funded. Just making sure that we have as much of that budget available to be able to use during the current year. So six and seven, six is for 2013 certificate of obligation bond and seven is for 2018 certificate of obligation bond.
Question, the, you're going to apply that to the Old Iron Bridge.
We're just applying it across all projects in that those funds may not be spent this year. I can't predict that. But we just applied it across the projects that were in that bond fund.
It'll just sit there until we're ready to.
It will.
Great, thanks.
And Council, I'll bring to your attention on page 462 of the packet, you'll see the all-fund summary that's updated and reflects all of these amendments. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I would like to first tell you, thank you for wording it. And it's much clearer with the way you've moved it around instead of, well, we've done it in the past. So it was much easier for me to understand. And I would move to approve.